Upstate, okay, thank you. Sorry. And the financial reports we needed to extract because we didn't have a finance committee meeting last Monday because of one of the snow days. Carl, I don't know if you had any quick comments on the financial minutes. It seems like a continuation of the information we've been looking at. A little bit increase in the surplus, but you know, in the same trend that we've been looking at.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Did anybody have any, do we have to do, we have to do each of these separately? Okay.
I think we do that.
Yeah, okay, all right. It's my fault, I know you're blaming me. Okay, could we have a motion for approving the monthly summary?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Great. All those in favor? Okay, great. And a motion for the combining financial statements?
So move.
Second.
Okay, great, all right. Favor? Thank you. And the com- oh.
You keep flipping down here, so I'll move.
The detail, the detail summary, right. I'm sorry, the detail report. It shouldn't say combining again, it should say the detail report.
Has amended. Second.
Okay, the motion has amended?
No, it's just the heading that was wrong.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
I was a little too hasty in putting them together.
Has we corrected back to the original?
Okay. So you're seconding, Carl?
Yeah.
Motion, you're second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. All right. All right. Tim, you're up. PTO update.
All right. Figured I'd give you an update of where we're at now for the year. I covered some of this stuff in previous updates, but we had a combined meeting in January with the superintendent's forum and PTO jumped in and I did a recap of the year, so I'll give you most of that information. We're doing really well financially this year. Fundraising has been going very well. We're about 5,000 over budget from what we planned. Everything has come in over. The Halloween Hoot was very successful. Picture Day was good and as was the book fair. Combining the book fair with the music concert that night, Family Night, was really a big success. So that should continue in the future. We tend to budget pretty conservatively because all of our money comes from fundraising and you never really know what you're gonna get. So we do tend to have a surplus in the budget and one of the things that we're doing is we're trying to spend some of that as we go along instead of waiting till the end of the year and try to figure out what to do. So we did talk to the teachers and we have donated $3,000 for the purchase of playground equipment bags for each grade. Mr. Taddy put together a proposal and they'll have frisbees, basketballs, footballs, sidewalk chalk and they're great appropriate and they'll be kept with each grade. So we have sent a check in for that. Did you receive that?
Yes, we did.
Checks in the mail?
All right, it's already in the works.
Thank you so much.
And we donated $2,000 of Scholastic Book Money for the end of the year for teachers to buy books. And we've also done a couple more special activities than we have in the past. Several of the grades have had two different programs and we're looking at doing a full school type of program. We're just going through the numbers to see if we can afford to add and trying to find the right one. And the next social event to wrap up fourth, fifth, and sixth grade will be Bingo Night in March. Swing by if you're up for some bingo. Dr. Stella will be calling numbers. Mrs. Prisco. So that's the next big event and otherwise we've been quiet. January and February are pretty quiet times for PTO. So that's about it.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Tim? Thank you, very much thank you. Okay. Dr. Stella, you are up.
It gives me a chance before Tim leaves to thank the PTO for the $3,000. It really does benefit every single child at the school. PTO has been doing a fantastic job and we like the idea we collaborated together with the Superintendent's Parent Academy. We teamed up together. I thought that was a very good thing. And just to, again, give a little summary, we had about 60 people attend. It was a very fruitful evening. We gave an overview of the report card, executive summary, but the parents really did a lot of hands-on work with it. We broke into small groups and it was interesting listening to the parents' feedback and their comments and we answered questions, had a dialogue, there was dialogue at the tables. But then we took the questions that parents asked too and Mrs. Prisco and the report card committee have been working diligently, putting them together so that we'll put them on our district website to reach a wider audience. And we're looking into the possibility, no guarantee, but the possibility of doing some webinars on the report card to try to reach a wider audience. And we anticipate doing another academy after the report cards are distributed just to see what the reactions are and again, we'll be tweaking it and we anticipate some will work on that report card. It's a big change, it's a paradigm shift, so we want to work diligently on that. So thank you so much, Tim, we really appreciate what you're doing. Let me do a commercial here. Breaking news. Congratulations to West Haven's Gabby Prisco. That's the daughter of Mrs. Prisco, whose name is the second team all SCC selection and a first team all-state selection from her defense position on the girls' hockey team.
Wow.
She's playing tonight, so we'll scoot you out of here as soon as you give your report so you can see the game. Now I see where she gets all of her energy from. I see the way you go around the hallways, up and down, Mrs. Prisco. So congratulations on that. As an invited guest, I represented the Woodbridge School District at the annual Chinese New Year Celebration at Southern. It was a wonderful, wonderful day. And many of our Beechwood Road School families and students, including alumni of Beechwood Road School, were in attendance and performed at the show. I met today with the principal from the Chinese Sunday School, Dr. Chang, who is Associate Director of Chinese Program, Interchange Program at Columbia University and also with Mrs. Joyce Shavers, Mrs. Shavers, who is a parent at Woodbridge, and Kathy Salernardi, the head of the Extended Day Program. But we're looking very seriously into exploring opportunities to offer Chinese language study and culture, the after-school program, as also in the summer programs. So there's a lot of possibility with that. More information will follow shortly, but we're working very studiously on that. Any way that we could promote language, all languages are wonderful, all cultures are good, any chance we could give our children a sense of global awareness and so on as to their benefit. And it's good to have, I believe, to have this connection with the Columbia Chinese Center as well as with Yale and any of the universities in promoting that. This will guarantee a stream of educators passing through the crossroads of the world, Woodbridge here, and exchanging ideas, visiting our children, speaking with them, speaking with our staff and so on. So we'll look forward to that. And also, it's another indication of how, what a wonderful group of parents, present company included, that we have in Woodbridge and how they so generously offer their talents. That's another asset, rich asset that we have. We're off to a good start, I believe so, with our Cafeteria Task Force. An organizational meeting took place last Friday and we're in motion. We'll be reporting back to the board. Mark your calendar, Friday, March 6th, we'll be celebrating our annual Read Across America Celebration. This event is part of a national campaign. We want children to be excited by reading, just like your daughter, just voracious readers. And this also gives us a chance to strengthen that bridge with our communities because many of our community leaders and town officials and our board members, Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, and educational leaders from our neighboring institutions have been invited to come. It's a fun day, so please come join us. Should we go right into differentiation?
Yeah.
Okay. Our report today is on differentiation and just as Dr. Silverberg mentioned with preschool, by the way, I thought that was a wonderful idea. And the board has been talking with the superintendent about forming a committee in spring to take a look at that, but we welcome his presentation. So the purpose of differentiation, the rationale leads towards more personalized learning for our children. Helps us to find their pathway and to provide for their, build on their individual strengths. We have a school-wide definition, we've developed one, of differentiation, so we're talking a common language and you have a copy of that in your packet. Basically, it means tailoring instruction and assessment to meet individual needs. As educators, we'll seek to find the learning pathways of children, as I mentioned, and help them to move along those pathways wherever they are, adjusting content, presentation, and learning environment as needed. Now, as I mentioned, that is a work in progress. It's a work that never stops. We developed a professional development plan a couple of years ago that we have been following, including work outside support from Dr. Jean Purcell, who is recognized nationally as an expert on differentiation, Emily Freo, Aces consultant. We've been working with our consultants from Columbia for quite a while on this here. But we also have a great deal of embedded professional learning from our specialists at the school level that have been working on that. Now, our administrators, our plan of presentation is our administrators will give you an overview of how differentiation, first of all, ties into teacher evaluation and performance review as well as the progress that we have been making, particularly in the area of language arts, reading and the workshop model, and in mathematics. Remember that a key question for our tri-state study focuses on differentiation as well. And I'm sure they'll share some anecdotal stories, that's always good. And I'll say a few words afterwards about how we're looking to quantify things also. Ladies, would you?
Thank you, Dr. Stella. I'm kind of sticking with the theme of our informal presentations. They've worked very well this year, kind of give you a more global picture and yes, with some anecdotal information. But to start with the school-wide goal of differentiation and how it's tied to teacher evaluation, we do have a school-wide goal. Each teacher meets with their administrative supervisor and together they determine how they will collect evidence for differentiation in their classroom. You have to remember that differentiation is not a thing. It's not something that you can walk into a room and say, "Okay, eight of the 10 people are being differentiated for." It's a process. It looks different in every classroom and it looks different from lesson to lesson because it depends on the needs of the students. So what we've done and we'll do this periodically throughout the year with our teachers is when we meet within the beginning of the year, we set up that plan. How will you collect evidence to show us that you are differentiating in your classroom? And we are certainly focusing on math as a key area this year. And they can send us evidence, share with us evidence all throughout the year, but there are three points throughout the year that we meet and discuss specifically. This, the beginning of the year, the middle at our mid-year conference, and at the end of the year when we have our summative conferences. Teachers have adopted different ways. One of the ways is to take a few students in their classroom, some who might require some support, some that would be representative of a student who received instruction and response to it, and one who might be a little further advanced. And we track those students and the kinds of lessons and the kinds of activities that are required for those students across time so that we can look at that as one way for teachers to share evidence with us. There are a multitude of ways. Whenever you walk into a classroom and you see students engage in small group activity, what is a key for us is to look at what are those activities? So we have fortunately, over the last several years, worked with the workshop model. And in reading, the workshop model absolutely lends itself to differentiation because those of you that are parents here, you know they're in there just writing books. So when a skill is taught to the children, it can be either supported, scaffolded, or then that child can take that and that teacher can take that to stretch it beyond what the typical student at that grade level might be required to do. Some examples of that that I'll share. For an example, this might be in comprehension in early grades. Questioning is a skill that asks students read, stopping questioning as they go. A student who might require a little bit of support might get one or two questions to look at. Other students that'd be a little more advanced would be developing their own questions as they went through. That's an example of differentiation in early grades that I can share with you. Retelling, you might have heard if you have a student in the younger grade, gist, list, end. It's a scaffold that is used for students. What is the gist of the story? List some of the important events and what is happening at the end of the story? Again, a student who needs a little support might use that scaffold. It might even be in a form for them to complete. But a student who might be more advanced might just need a sentence starter. First, then, next, after that. And they can use that framework. And eventually, the idea is to take those scaffolds away. So you can see any of that happening in an early primary language arts classroom. There is a natural progression for a student to go from that retell, which is very detailed, to a summary. And that typically happens between second and third grade. We start to make that shift. But the beauty of reading workshop is that that can happen for any child at any time. It can happen at the beginning of the second grade if a student is ready, with a writing component if they can. It can happen at the end of the third grade if a student isn't quite ready. So we have those tools for us and the teachers consistently are working to meet the needs of each child. Couple other examples, kindergarten classroom. So phonics of students who can require multiple repetitions to master either beginning sounds or ending sounds. So I watched in kindergarten classroom and each child, so there was a small group of participants and others were participating from sitting and sharing the information, but the actors, so to speak, one child who needed a significant amount of support was the lead and it was a very important role. But what the outsider doesn't realize is that child had the repetition of every single time a new word was made, they repeated that and got that pattern and that pattern. But if you were a little more advanced, you were able to change the beginning and the ending sounds. There was nothing being written. Children had their letters right around their neck and that single sound that happened to be the short "a" was the sound. And we were changing beginning sounds and ending sounds and students were moving with input from the children that were manipulating that. And then we could get to the a little more advanced, sixth grade. So our teachers are planning constantly together to meet the needs of all the learners and we may have some very advanced students in our sixth grade. So an example to reach that could be to go from using visual supports for students who need it to making sure that in their writing, students are using, including specific academic vocabulary, depending on the domain, could be social studies, could be science, but including that in their writing. So those are some language arts examples. I have some math ones, but I think I'll let Mrs. White go ahead.
Math is an interesting topic because as an adult, people feel comfortable saying, "Oh, I'm terrible at math." You don't find too many adults who say, "I'm terrible at reading," or "I can't read." Math, it just seemed to get a pass if you weren't that good at it. And we're now focusing on mathematics in our school in a really big way. Having the math club actually opened my eyes and I told Mrs. White about that, to the number of students who absolutely adore math. I really didn't realize it. And it's really sort of been an impetus for a lot of this going on and I appreciate her very much for that. So this is our year of math. We're starting our first year of math. It doesn't mean it's gonna be year of math and then we're done. Math is now a focus. Everybody has a goal in math this year. Every teacher has a goal for his or her class in math and even specialists are trying to work the math in. So if you walk down the hallways and you see some of the artwork that's in the hallway, a lot of it is tied into math and it will say, you know, angles or horizontal lines or if you look at the artwork going down toward the nurse's office. It actually, Mrs. Axerson, has been putting up math and art and really paying attention to how much mathematics is an art. As far as differentiation, when I think about differentiation, I feel totally confident saying that in this building, 100% of the teachers are working for differentiation. How it's working, it's different for everybody. It's differentiated for everybody, actually. As far as differentiating, as far as knowing your students as individuals and differentiating for them as individuals, every day, social, emotional, that happens every place. And I think that's important to remember that our teachers know their kids really well. And the more you talk to the teachers about their kids, it's always my kids, well, my kids, it's, they know them. So that part is taken care of and that's a really big part. As it comes to the math, we're working on that. As Mrs. Prisco said, everybody has a math goal. Differentiation is a goal for everybody. When I go in math classes to do observations, I'm seeing wonderful work. I'm seeing partnerships almost every place, from kindergarten all the way up to sixth grade, small group work. I was in the kindergarten, they were doing the teens and they used ten frames. Some of the kids in kindergarten need the ten frame, you know, it's the ten squares, and then add on more. So it's 10 plus something, 14. So they have the 10 plus five. Some of the kids need to actually count, one, two, three, four, five, all the 10, and then add the five in. You know, doing it pointing and counting. Some of them can look at the ten frame and say, "10, I know it's 10 and I'm gonna add five more." Some of the students were writing equations in kindergarten class. I mean, it was totally differentiated. I was in a fourth grade class for problem solving. They were in four different groups. The teacher going from group to group, working with each group according to how they had done a pre-assessment for problem solving. And there was one group that was working on University of Delaware math forum problems, which are extremely challenging, and this is fourth grade. And that group took probably 40 minutes to work on one problem, but excited and discussing it and having conversations at that level with the teacher coming by and checking in with them, working with them, giving them some ideas. I was in a third grade class also for problem solving, six different groups, rotating through with the teacher working each time of the group. That's the challenge. You have one person and 22 kids or 20 kids. It's a huge challenge and you watch teachers jump from group to group and from partnership to partnership, but they do it, they work on it. I just happened to walk into a third grade today. It wasn't a planned observation. They were working on area and perimeter. They had a little, not the cubes, but the tiles, little tiles. And each pair had 12 tiles. And what they had to do is figure out how many different ways to make different areas and perimeters from the 12 tiles. There was a group of three students who already really were past that. What their job was in third grade was to create a robot. They had to draw a robot. The head of the robot had to have a perimeter of 30 centimeters and the body had to have a perimeter of 60 centimeters. So talking through how many different permutations can you have to make that? So that's where we're seeing differentiation. If they work in progress, people are working really hard to differentiate for kids. They truly are. We've always been, in my opinion, this is my opinion, really very adept at working with the children who need remediation. What I'm hearing and what I'm seeing and what I know is a fact, as being a teacher here for a long time, it's getting to the kids who need the enrichment. That's the struggle. And that's where we're working with Emily Freo from Aces. That's where our math coordinators are working really hard, finding all kinds of interesting things for kids to do. That's been the challenge, it's a great challenge to have, but that's been our challenge that we're working really hard on. So teachers are working very, very hard toward differentiation. It's a work in progress. The kids are benefiting from what they're doing and I'm really pleased with the direction we're going in. We have a long way to go, but we're on the right path.
I'm gonna add a little plug for when we talk about the specialists. So the specialists, we just had the 100th day of school and if you are in kindergarten, first grade or second grade, that's huge. But one of my favorite activities is the first grade with Mr. Taddy and 100 exercises and the math that happens in that North Gym with all five first grade classes, all performing their 100 exercises, but in groups of 10, and how many more do we need if we stop at six? So it is really everywhere. So we appreciate the work of the teachers, but also the year to allow us to really dig into this as a goal.
And I'd like to mention the fact that we look at the academics and you mentioned physical wellness, also, physical education, we're looking at differentiation there, as well as social, emotional, that's another big piece. And as far as looking for a systemic way of quantifying what we're doing to try to get snapshots of the school or grade levels to see if it's happening in various places and to measure it over time, the administrative team and I are working, also the two math specialists, we're working and studying closely with Jean Purcell and we're developing a type of walkthrough that we hope to roll out next year that will allow us to do periodic snapshots of, again, grade levels, school levels, primary, intermediate. And we hope to involve more teacher leaders in that also, so it becomes part of a culture here and that we're talking about issues of differentiation as we move along. But we'll stop here to see if there's any questions.
Did anybody have any questions for you? Gary?
When you're doing class placements for the students, is it ever considered kind of what level the students are at so that you can keep kids who are really advanced at one thing or really struggling in one area so that there can be a bigger group of kids, so the teacher doesn't necessarily have to have five levels in the classroom, but can have fewer levels?
For elementary school, we do consider heterogeneous groups. Students do benefit from having a wide variety of classmates who wish to learn, so.
And I mean, I'm not saying leveling the classes, like having a, you know, different, but just to keep kind of groups of kids, you know, maybe ones that.
Teachers do look for partners, learning partners.
Absolutely.
People who, with whom a child really has a good relationship as far as learning. So very often, you're looking for strong learning partners when you try to place kids with at least one or two strong learning partners. And that's, it's something we try to do. It's tough sometimes, but that is part of, people saying, "My kids need a strong learning partner." There's a lot of "my kids" talks. It's true.
Does anybody else have any questions for you?
Thank you. I thought especially the examples, that was great, that makes things much more clear to me than the general. And I don't know how anybody else feels, I love this format, you know, where you can talk to us and then, you know, we can ask questions and, you know, not so much the presentation.
It helps us kind of do some more authentic examples for you too.
Yeah, I think it's, it works well. So thank you.
In addition to the teachers who are working so hard on this, teachers that are working so hard, I want to thank administrators. We don't often thank them, but they're working extra hard, they're doing studying and researching right alongside the teachers and helping to move things along, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Gabby.
All right. They both get to.
Send me an email.
Okay. Okay, no, we skipped over the technology grant. Yeah.
Move that we approve the 2015-16 School Technology Grant for submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education.
Okay. So you can tell us about that?
I'll tell you a little.
Steve's all in favor.
Someone else is paying for it.
Yeah, it's money, that's where you start, I say, it's money from the outside to us to complement local expenditures. And it's a grant that the state put out to support the implementation of the Common Core, which we're doing with our own curriculum and smart balanced assessments. But we're applying for this to make up for some monies that we spent before, such as on keyboards and things like that and our system. But our children will benefit from this beyond any kind of testing, so it's a logical thing to just go for the money. And again, our tech team did a great job of researching it. And again, our tech team did a great job of researching it and really tying it together, so it's a support for our taxpayers that allows us to do more for our children.
Is this something that's one of these grants where we know already we got it, or is this something we're actually competitively bidding for?
We don't know exactly how much we're getting.
But every district will be getting some funds.
Yeah, we'll be getting something. We're shaking the tree as hard as we can.
Gotcha.
And hoping to get as much as we can, but I'm sure there'll be a formula or a percentage that's going to...
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Okay. All right, facilities. I know we had to cancel our meeting.
Yes.
Okay. The building committee, is there any major things you need to report? I know it's been a little quieter since the chiller went up on the roof.
Well, I would say it's been a very, because I'm sure you all agree, it's been a very cold winter. So the number of classes that we had to move had been minimal. In fact, the classes that we have moved, only recently, a couple of the kindergarten classes, because of the old ventilator, which we plan to replace in the summer time. So we're knocking on wood, we seem to be ahead of the game. Still trying to adjust the heat, sometimes we're getting too much heat in certain areas, but never a lack of heat, so that's good. There'll be some security things that will be upgraded in the building, and I'll be reporting to the board on that and to the public. One of the main things is going to be the addition of a Sally Port. I've mentioned this before, but we should make a, we anticipate making a major movement during the spring vacation. That'll be a paradigm shift, because it'll involve the installation of a third set of doors and a Sally Porter area in between the second set and the third set. There'll be a parent portal in a way of identifying yourself coming in. There'll be software to do any background research on anyone coming in, but also will allow us to know, not only for the children's protection, but for the protection of adults, who's in the building at any one time, in case of fire or anything else like that. But I guarantee you, we're going to maintain our friendliness as a school, and make sure that there's not one parent who would ordinarily have come in that doesn't come in to either volunteer or to work on a project, or to visit a play or things like that. So we have tighter security that's coming, but at the same time, we want to keep our philosophy as a school, as far as a community school. More information will follow on that.
Thanks. Is there any questions? Okay. Finance, I know we had to cancel finance because of the weather. Cave?
Cave actually had a meeting. Well, it was rescheduled because of the weather. I went to the legislative breakfast for our area, and Gess Lausberg, who's now the chair, co-chair of the Education Committee, was there, and Pam Stineski, who's representative from Milford, who's also on the Education Committee. And, you know, the audience told them what they were hoping to see at this legislative session, and the general message was sort of, hands off, you know, let us catch up, let us implement what we've been asked to implement, and don't send too much else our way. And at this point, the governor's budget is starting to make its way through, and the first education hearing is this Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and upcoming topics, social-emotional update. Now, we did a social-emotional update in November, so this is another update, or this is just the climate?
This would be, well, that's tied into the social-emotional, so it'll be about the climate survey. The climate survey.
Not the results, the questions. Right, right, because we haven't done that. That's usually done in May.
Yeah, what we'd like... Okay. Can you tell me if I should talk about that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. We'd like to implement the National School Climate Centers Survey. It's a research-based survey. It's from a very reputable organization that's worked very closely with the state and highly recommended. But we'll have a chance at the next meeting for you to ask any questions about it. We'll do an executive summary of it, give you an idea of what we plan to do. And we'd like to focus on the, I'm sure there'll be discussion next one, I'm not trying to have discussion now, but we're looking at focusing at the third to the sixth grade to do it in a developmental way.
Is the actual details of the survey available? Like if we go online and look at this, can we look at what the questions are in the survey? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
So if it's...
I don't know if that's...
Either way, could we make sure that the actual survey's included in the packet for next time? Okay.
We'll put information in, any links.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I'm not sure which will be linked to it, that's why I want to make sure it's the right survey.
Okay. Did anybody have anything else for the upcoming meeting? This is some kind of record. I'm getting scared.
Must be.
What?
Must be.
All right.
And we started a couple of weeks later.
Yeah. Yikes. New business, they're showing the business, right? Public comment, we know this, you missed public comment, huh? There was public comment. I know. We were all like, oh, Steve. And that's it, right?
Hold it. Second.
Hold it, second. Okay, all those in favor? All right.